Well, good morning, everybody. I would like to call the July 13, 2023 A P C D hearing board special meeting to order. It is nine thirty-one AM in Army Pacific daylight time. Madam Clerk, can you please call the law and surrender any witnesses?
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. Please note, Member Gonzalez have notified us that he will not be present for today's meeting. Member Powers?
Here.
Member Spencer?
Here.
Vice Chair Schley?
Here.
Chair Rodriguez?
Present.
Thank you. I would ask that the following individuals please identify themselves for the record. Hearing Board Counsel?
You're muted.
You're muted, Emily.
Emily Helm, Senior Deputy County Counsel, Counsel for the Hearing Board.
Thank you.
Air Control District staff.
Dan Plotner, Program Coordinator.
We are in the Miami Civil Action Investigator.
Thank you. I would like to note for the record, Emily Helm's counsel for the Hearing Board will be participating remotely for today's meeting. I will now swear in those that wish to provide testimony on any item on today's agenda. This includes petitioners, respondents, and A P C D staff. Please raise your right hand for the swearing in. Do you solemnly swear firm that the testimony you give in the matter before this hearing board is the truth, the whole truth, and any other truth?
I do.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. We will now move to non-agenda public communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the hearing board members on subject matters within the hearing board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's agenda. Before we proceed, Madam Clerk, could we receive any requests from members of the public that wish to address the board today on non-agenda public communication?
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. We have not received any requests from members of the public to address the board under non-agenda public communication today. However, those members of the public that are joining us via teleconference, please dial into teleconference the line now using the instructions provided on the screen. You may also indicate that you wish to speak on this item by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen or by pressing star nine now. Madam Chair, seeing no hands raised, there are no members of the public wishing to provide non-agenda public communication today.
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. And so in that's the case, let's actually go and move towards item number B, which is the revised hearing board rules of procedure. Before we get started, I mean, Madam Clerk, have we received any requests from members of the public that wish to address the board today on administrative item B?
Madam Chair, we have received no requests from members of the public to address the board virtually on administrative item D. However, we do have one member of the public that wishes to provide testimony in person.
Thank you so very much. We will definitely take in all that person's testimony, I mean, at the end of the discussion. And I know, I know that Mr. Engerman will be with us and make very detailed notes. I would like definitely to open the discussion for the revised and my hearing board rules of procedure. And the idea here, hopefully, is that each member of the board has had no opportunity to review and making all the annotations that are needed to the documents provided in the packet. We will actually go one by one, rather quickly, so until we get to the end, which I believe we're going to be able to do that. Certainly, I mean, every single item will be addressed first by the hearing board members. We will, of course, allow the comments period of including A P C D representatives in here. Once we close that item, then for that rule number, we will move on to the next. I mean, so it will be certainly, I mean, you know, definitely respectful, but definitely a little bit more of a working group than more than anything else. Ms. Helm, I mean, will continue taking notes, introductions, and providing certainly counsel to the hearing board. And hopefully, we'll be able to make a dent, I guess, in a positive fashion to this item that has been I mean, in front of us for a couple of days. So actually, months to be as reviewed. Any comments before we proceed with that? I mean, I guess only strategy. You know? Perfect. I mean, so, and Mr. Engerman definitely will take in your comments at the end, just move from the rules of procedure, okay, for today. So let's actually get on to, I mean, rule number one. It is part of your agenda packet. I'm going to get into that one rather quickly as I change screens on my laptop. Rule one is also being shown on the screen and here in the room for the benefit of anybody who's actually joined us online or who would like to review this at the end in the future. So rule one general, I mean, so I'm not going to read them. Are there any comments from the members of the board on rule number one?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So is this our venue, sixteen hundred Pacific Highway?
It has been, it was designated hearing room at the time. So I mean, this is a good point. Has the governing board, yeah, we have discussed that. Yeah, I mean, has the board made any changes on that one between who did? Yeah.
I was encouraged to do that address, but I don't think that's what we're going to be.
I know. I remember previously the council for the district. She was here, I mean, escapes me.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tiagi. She said that, I mean, it's not even, it's not even available right now or something, right? I thought we had changed it to this.
Yeah, Ms. Helm, I mean, do you have a recollection or a red copy, red line copy indicating that we were going to be adding the location will be somebody with A P C D offices, I mean, to rule number one? Emmy, are you on, we cannot hear you, are you on mute again?
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
I apologize. So I have at sixteen hundred Pacific Highway unless otherwise specifically noticed in the public agenda, but I don't see any problem with changing to the current location. It seems to make sense.
I mean, because that was, I think, that was what I read. I mean, unless otherwise specified, the public will notice it then. Because I mean, personally, I don't think that we should get rid of the sixteen hundred Pacific Highway. Because I mean, we could definitely use that room in the future. Very nice, another one. You know, Bill, what do you think about that in a book that?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't turned out.
No, no, no.
I guess I wonder rule one, it's just that I didn't anticipate we'd ever be at sixteen hundred Pacific Highway again. But if it's a possibility, then I guess we would be.
That's what we're going to be using in the future. Are you okay with the language represented? Thank you so very much. I mean, any other comments? Comments not from the A P C D?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you. I mean, rule number two, I mean, it actually calls not for definitions, and these are the set of definitions. Are there any comments not from the board members? I do have a comment. I would like to include a definition for the clerk of the board on this line. I don't think that it has been either from the responsibilities or anything like that has been identified. I would like to suggest, and of course, I mean, this is can be edited, of course. I mean, I would like to say, you know, the clerk of the board or clerk of the board is an independent body from the A P C D and shall provide administrative support to the hearing board in connection with hearing board proceedings. Because I did not see anything there.
A comment, though. Wouldn't that maybe be under the governing board's kind of jurisdiction about, like, maybe under the governing boards?
I mean, that's, no. Definitely not. So, yeah, because I mean, the governing board has their own clerk.
Ah, yes.
And then, you know, I mean, so, and then we actually have our own clerk. So that's why I thought, you know, that we should include it here. That's how I understand it.
Well, she's mentioned, sorry, the clerk that she working is mentioned in the minutes.
Yeah.
Rule four.
Yeah, but this is only for the preparation of records. So I mean, I thought that, you know, I mean, it was, again, you know, it was needed so that there is no confusion, I guess, as to the role and what type of services they provide to us.
So it would be maybe you want it under rule two definition emissions under like?
Yeah.
Inserted between E and F under?
Ah, better.
Alphabetically between D and E.
Exactly.
The clerk of the board names.
Ms. Helm?
So my only concern there is that these are just supposed to be the rules governing our, the conduct of our hearings. I think that might exceed the scope of the procedure. And then also, I believe the terms of the clerk of the board's assistant are governed by a contract. So it might be good to review that just to see exactly what services are to be provided.
So could we assign that to you? I mean, that just not to provide clarity, I mean, Emily, because I mean, that
Yeah.
This is definitely new to us, you know, due to the changes, I mean, on that A B. So if you could definitely take a look at that, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
But I got some questions. If the rest, if we end up after reviewing today, the rest of everything looks good and we want to just stop things today? Is that what we might be doing today? Then, you know, it might be something that we would just leave for the future.
I mean, again.
And I would also ask many other hearing boards to find clerk in there.
Based on my survey, I didn't see it. I think it would be easy enough to just define the clerk of the board as providing services to the hearing board.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Also, Madam Chair, the items noticed for discussion and not for adoption today, so we would not be able to adopt.
Okay. Okay. Now, thank you so very much. Okay, perfect. I mean, but it can be noticed. Hopefully, we get ahead of ourselves today. It can be noticed for the next one, and then hopefully take action. Perfect. Okay. Thank you so very much for clarification, everybody, and thanks, Emily, for getting that clarification. I hear this, but definitely, I know that it has, this is an item that has gone back and forth, you know, I mean, we're serving all the time like a tennis game. Okay.
Under section and regular variance on the second line, we changed district to A P C D, and I guess we should change A to M. Brown, that's the only thing we see. That's fair.
You stated a little bit from me.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sorry. It said we changed the word district to A P C D.
Yes.
And the word choir was A, so A district should rather than A A P C D, it should be A P C D.
Got it. Correct. Thank you. Very good catch. Did he catch that?
Yes.
Thank you. We actually had no comments from A P C D. Thank you, I mean, Dr. Spencer. I've actually moved to rule number three. Chair and vice chair. Are there any comments from the members of the board?
No.
No.
Any comments from the A P C D? Welcome. Thank you so very much. Any comments on any other? Rule number four, this is minutes as preparation of record. Are there any comments from the members of the board?
Just an observation. The member dissents in a vote, then any other member can request the reasons for that, and that will be memorialized. Okay.
Yes, correct. And I think this is important. I mean, I remember actually arguing on that line, saying, yes, I got it. And it's very much in line with our district as well. Yeah.
That's fine.
Any, any comments from the A P C D representatives?
No comment.
Rule number five, hearing board hours. Any comments from the members of the board? I mean, any comments from A P C D representatives? Thank you so very much. Let's move on to rule number six, qualification of hearing board members. Are there any comments from members of the board?
This, to clarify, this is if you have any perceived or possible conflict of interest, you recuse yourself from hearing a particular item.
Yeah.
Yeah, you recuse yourself or someone might, someone might request that.
You do that.
Yes.
They'll come the member.
Good.
Any comments from the A P C D representatives on rule number six?
No comment.
Thank you. Rule number seven, forum. Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from A P C D, I mean, representatives?
No, no comments.
Thank you so very much. Rule number eight, hearing by fewer than four members. Any comments from the members of the board? No comments. Any comments from the A P C D representatives?
Is the word four capitalized there?
On that line?
It's the second sentence from the norm.
It looks like it's capitalized.
So maybe that should be lower case?
Well, it's because it's capitalized because it's the rule. It's restating the title of the rule.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Okay, then no comments.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so very much. Rule number nine, I mean, effective, effective dance of action. Jeez. Any comment from the board members? Hearing no comment, I mean, A P C D, are there any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Let's move on to rule number ten. Any comments from the board members? Okay, hearing no comments, I mean, A P C D, do we actually have any comments from A P C D?
No, no comment. Thank you.
Rule eleven, representation by counsel. Any comments not from the board members? Hearing no comment, A P C D, are there any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Rule number twelve, public comment. Are there any comments from the board members?
No.
No. Thank you. I mean, no comments from the board members. I mean, any comments from A P C D on rule number twelve?
No comment.
Thank you so very much. Rule fourteen, request for hearing. Are there any comments? I mean, I still have my black, I mean, that copy still calls not for fifteen copies to the clerk of the hearing board as the last line on in A. Yes. Do we really need to have? Do we really need to have five fifteen copies on that one?
It gets as if it's not, if it's not submitted electronically.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should put if not submitted electronically again, um, before, uh, you know, um, on the second to last line. The preceding the, the last sentence.
Yeah.
So that it's clear that we don't need, um, unnecessary paper copies if it's filed electronically.
Yeah, you know, so maybe not that last sentence, I mean, I agree with you, I mean, the shareship. Maybe that, that last sentence should be revised, I mean, to say the petition together with the company documents that have not, you know, been submitted electronically. You know, shall contain a, a total of something on those lines. So that we make it really very specific that we're actually addressing card copies. Or you can also say, I mean, the, uh, the card copies need to be provided, I mean, the, because they haven't been submitted electronically. I mean, the expectation of these, the following copies, something on those lines. I mean, the, you, what do you think?
I think that sounds great.
Okay.
Seems like it's really simple and, and good change.
Okay, thank you. I mean, so I will allow you to wordsmith that, you know, but again, to be really very clear. Okay, I mean, uh, so that will be rule thirteen. I mean, any other comments on rule thirteen from the members of the board?
Just a quick question, the sentence, the petitioner shall also serve the petition and the accompanying documents regardless of length upon the holder of the permit or variance. Is, is the petitioner the holder of the permit?
So apparently.
Understand the sentence, the petitioner shall also serve the petition and the accompanying documents regardless of length upon the holder of the permit or variance.
And plus that sentence is in capitalized, so. Maybe this is an afterthought once.
But it's more a question to the district, isn't, isn't the permit holder the petitioner? I mean, why would?
Sometimes it's the district.
Yeah, you know, but, but Emily, I mean, that definitely there is a period on, uh. This is item B within parentheses, line number three. Okay? So there's a capitalization of the T.
Maybe what would clarify this is the second sentence should start. When, like, when the petitioner is the APCD. District, you know, A, is the APCD. Then shall also serve a petition. Upon the holder of the permit or variance, right? Because that's, that's the only time we would have to do that, is when the petitioner is the APCD.
I would just say when the petitioner is not the permit holder.
Yeah.
Then the petitioner shall serve.
Yeah. I know that better. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, when the petitioner is not the permit holder, thank you. That actually leaves that, you know, very, very clear. Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments on rule thirteen?
I have a comment. Do, do we know what is the intent of adding or variance there?
Uh, one line added, please.
Uh, vision, the one we're just looking at. Um, I, I understand the reason to have, uh, upon the order of permit, but. Or variance?
Hmm.
Why would that be?
Well, it, it wouldn't sometimes, sometimes variances come up and there's no permit yet, right? Or like, the, right, like, like sometimes. The district just trying to get this person to, you know, comply with the licensing scheme and the permits and apply, but, but they're asking us for a variance to be, right, like.
We, they can, we can not issue a variance, I mean, that, uh, empty to that does not have a permit, that's rule ten.
Maybe, I don't know.
My chair, I mean, there are, uh. Instances where there is a permit appeal that could be filed by a member of the public. And so that would, they would now be the petitioner. So there would be different, the district may be a petitioner, but a member of the public may be a petitioner. So in that case, it would clarify. Permit or variance.
It'd be so nice if this was a table. No, thank you so very much, I mean, my clerk, you know, so.
Well, there doesn't seem to be a reason to take it out, so just leave it in when you think it's your.
It may be so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not on. Perfect. Any other comments, I mean, on rule thirteen, any other sections? From the district? From the district, please. But had any other comments?
Yes, the council sentenced this note about deleting the last sentence in this. Part of the regulation. That is, we are suggesting. Thirteen on this point.
In, in what section again?
This is an emergency.
No, I mean, are, are we on, uh, on rule thirteen?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, what section?
Does it remove the last sentence? Maybe Emily can comment on this.
I don't think she can comment.
Comment, yeah.
Um, let's see.
So this issue has to do with the ARB, not recognizing some of the actions that.
So I think, I think I can, um. I, I just didn't find any, um, citation. To support, um. The retroactive variance. Um, so there's different, there's different theories of thought on that. And it might be something to address more on a case by case basis instead of in the role of procedure. Um, that was the thought there.
Yeah, and I don't see the.
So, so rule thirteen, I mean, E, uh, I think speaks of emergency variance. So it says, a request for emergency variance shall be initiated by calling or contacting the APCD. I mean, office. I mean, but in this case, as officer, of course, I mean, the petition can be filed and served pursuant to this. Rule request for hearing, the theater of. We don't, we don't say we go retroactively on that one. Maybe we should definitely take a look at. The, the rule that deals with emergency variances.
You're right, there's, there's nothing in here about.
Yeah. That doesn't say that. Okay. Good.
So how about we're not to add that? Yeah, that's the main thing.
And that's the main thing. Uh, rule thirteen, I mean, for APCD, any other comments?
Yeah, I had a minor, minor typo to bring to your attention, um, thirteen B, the first sentence. Sells, um, air pollution control. But, um, based on the definitions, the term should probably either just be APCD or the spelled out. Is an air pollution control district.
Control district, yes, no, I mean, first line of the. Push on control district.
Thank you, perfect.
So Emily, I mean, did you get that one?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments on rule fourteen? No, perfect. Uh, rule fourteen, this is content of petitions. Comments by the member of the board. I'm going to make a comment on this one, because I mean, the. Eight. Capital A within parentheses, capital B within parentheses, then lower P. I do not recall how many petitions we have been, you know, have been submitted to us, now that are typed in double spaced. A letter. I mean, I truly believe there is one point five of one, the ones that I've read. Again, this is a rule. We, we not need to do that, I just want to make sure that, you know, something. Like this, no word be used by an external party. On saying that you're not following, you know, your own, uh, rules. With, because I mean, I, I did reviewed. Submissions, and I actually have to say that particularly from petitioner, these are not type written double spaced.
Well, certainly, if they're complying with by using the forms from subsection D, forms are going to be smaller than that, but I guess. If it's. I think B is, is meant to, like, if it's just. I, if it's just a petition that's not using the form, then we want to make sure to be able to read it.
And I think, you know, that maybe, you know, that would be the language that I would say, you know, though. Readable and clear, for example, I mean, and as a suggestion like that, I just don't want to afford. This specification to get in the way from somebody who has. Other interests.
I just remember, you know, maybe being like fifth grade or something and, and, uh. And being told, oh, you can bring in a one-page cheat sheet, and then you, you know, you.
You, you are filling in.
Write it so tiny. And it's, you know, and so, yeah, I think the intention behind this is just so that we can read them.
Yeah.
So. Type written double spaced, letter-sized paper seems to be, you know. I mean, four inches at the top, one inch on the left side, I don't, I, I mean, that sounds similar to pleading. Pleading paper, so. Um. Maybe we should just put, um, at the beginning. Um, if petitioners are not choosing to use. A form, see subsection D, then. A petition shall, you know.
I mean, I.
And that would be in that.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I mean, the, uh, yes, uh, again, uh, as you heard me say before, I mean, I'm in the middle of big audits. I just want it for it to be readable, I mean, and logical here, so that, uh. And maybe, you know, again, language, you, you can see, I mean, Emily, I'm struggling a little bit on this one, I don't want for. These type of legalese not to get in the way of, uh. Any administrative, you know, um, appeal or anything like that, you know, so. If you could actually.
I think you could all. Oh, I'm sorry, you, you might. Well, I'm, I, if you're, we're concerned about, um, that, I don't know, not complying with the exact form, getting in the way, you might just say that. They must be, you know, clearly legible, the board reserves the right to, you know, return any pleadings it can't, or any submissions it can't. Read.
I, I would agree with that, I mean, I just don't want to provide the flexibility, particularly, you know, with the utilization of the electronic formats, I mean, that. That this is an example, I mean, another requirement, and as long as they're legible, readable, things of that nature, okay, so. They're not, you know, size font, uh, six. And with no margins, only four or five margins. Uh, yeah, I just thought, you know, this stuff is like, I don't. Remember the last time we brought anything like this? Appreciate that, no, I mean, edits on that one. Comments, I mean, that from the APCD, uh, excuse me, comments not from the hearing board members, I mean, on both, uh, routine. I'm getting picky, sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering if this item under B is telling people that you can't submit this electronically. A member of the public is reading this.
Yeah.
Since it has to be typed written on paper.
Exactly.
You need to add something, it also says, when not submitted electronically, then.
Yeah, you know, maybe, yeah, you're actually about, yeah, the right way. So Emily, did you catch that one?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
If not using the electronic form, uh. Well, actually, did we want to adopt just the more flexible language of, you know, the. The pleadings, like, did we want to get rid of all the double-spaced letter-sized paper and just say they must be legible and you may return any that we can't read?
For, for me, I would still like to keep that as an example, but not as a. Specific requirement. Going with this one. So, uh. But definitely the legibility and when not, you know, so submitted, I mean, electronically or something like that, these are the, this is the guidance.
Oh, we might note that this is an acceptable method of. Submitting your form of.
Yes, something on the lines.
Sounds great.
Brings me back, you know, I mean, to my years in high school. Any other comments from the members of the board? I mean, how about APCD on rule fourteen?
Um, well, I just wanted to share that, the phrase not using the electronic form, um. We might want to leave that out, just because typically, um, people will. Do the form and then a separate petition paper, and so that, that might send the message that we do one or the other, um, and, and usually people do both, so. Um, and, and we may have agreed on that, I'm just not totally sure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then, the last time I checked the document, I did check the link and it worked just fine, but.
I did check the link.
Yes, um, no comment, no further comment?
Perfect.
I, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
It, it looks like the intent of this, the B, this lowercase B we were just looking at, is so it can be bound and presented to the board as a paper. Packet, so there, there may be a better way to write a one-inch margin on the left side, or just say, one-inch margins on all.
All slides.
Yeah.
If we want to get it picky about.
I mean, I, I don't want to get picky, definitely, I mean, that we don't, that. Things are about per se, you know, so, I mean, again, it's just. Look, looking forward and knowing that electronic is the way to go, so I, you know, I just don't want to go to the specifications, you know, so. I'm sorry, not anyone, it's like, I told you, I mean, I'm auditing, so. I will audit that and say, yes, I conform. FDA will audit that and say, those don't conform. No, thank you so very much. If that's the case, no, uh, let's actually move to rule fifteen, petitions for regular variance. Let's actually take a couple of minutes to read it and take a look at the changes that were suggested. Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from APCD on rule fifteen?
No.
Thank you so very much. Rule sixteen, petition for interim variance. Are there any comments from the members of the board? Comments from APCD?
No comments.
Thank you. Rule seventeen, petition for emergency variance. There you go.
Just have a question on this one. Has a petition for an emergency variance ever been defined?
Yes. I mean, like rejected, I mean, saying, I mean, that you do not get the emergency variance, yes. And you don't get it, so I can actually say that category back.
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, even by the, the statement. Um, of the rules, it says, you know, uh, under, let's see, D or I. No emergency variance for breakdown condition shall be granted unless they, unless the chair or other designated members finds that the occurrence constitutes a breakdown. And continued operations are unlikely to create an imminent threat or hazard, and I can imagine many times there might be a threat or hazard, and so. So that would mean. You know, they'd have to stop operations until we can convene as board and. And they could, you know, to go with the red or the hazard, yeah, something like that.
I don't see the.
Yeah, no, so, so, um, yeah, so what's happened with that is that, um, this version has, um, any, any language like that taken out. So, um, I looked at April.
Thank you.
Versions versus today's versions, and it just has to take that. So unless anyone wants to add it back in, no discussion.
No, thank you. Any comments from the APCD on rule eighteen?
Uh, you mean seventeen?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yes, seventeen emergency, sorry.
Yes, I think I found the typo, um, in section H. Uh, I think that's, um, H fifteen, and it is the last line. And I wrote down in my notes, I've removed the word this. Uh, because it looks like. It says this. Rule thirteen and we're in rule seventeen, so I thought. That might be a typo.
Of rule seventeen, yes.
Or all thirteen. Move the D in parentheses to go after rule thirteen. Um, because. Let's see.
Could you read what you're proposing?
Yeah, so. Um. So starting from emergency variance, this file pursuant to subdivision. D of rule thirteen. So that would be just removing the word this. You know, or alternatively, that D could also be placed after the number thirteen, because visually, right now, it looks sort of like. It's a, it's a section on its own, which. Um, could be a little confusing. So that D could be moved. Be after rule thirteen. Did you catch that, Emily?
I am, yes, I am definitely in favor of removing this, and then I think whether, where you place the D is, um. Uh, up to, up to the board.
Definitely, I mean, the, uh, how would you, just a general, I mean, suggestion, how, how would you edit it?
Subdivision A of this. I think. I mean, either way, it, it really, it's just a matter of style, it doesn't matter. It, it doesn't have any legal significance.
So maybe you can, oh, put a this, or. Either or, it would be just, yeah. Uh, yes.
So I believe we could either say subdivision D of rule thirteen request for hearing, or we could say. Rule, oh, you know what, I think. I, I think I know why it went this way, because technically, rule thirteen D isn't request for hearing, that would just be rule thirteen. Um, so, so that was just a minor. I noticed subdivision D of thirteen, request for hearing. But doesn't have legal significance, so either's fine.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you can definitely propose it, I mean, for the next meeting, that would be fantastic. Either or, as I said, you know, it's a matter of style, as long as it doesn't, you know, interfere with the meetings, that's fair.
Okay, then we'll just, we'll just strike this, and then I think we should be good.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on seventeen? No. Thank you so very much. Let's actually move now to rule eighteen.
We're doing great.
Permit appeals. Any comments from the members of the board?
Just a question, I remember the Navy, that, they had counsel and. Uh, we denied their appeal, and they came back, it seemed like. Uh, I just want to make sure this rule protects us from. Deep-pocket entities just keep coming back with the same stuff. Um, and this may do it.
Yeah.
Because we were at the point where we were going to be hearing them, I think, for the third time, give us these same setbacks, it seemed like. Their issue was to just keep coming back until we said, okay.
Hmm. So, so Emily, can we just, uh, when we do the permit appeals, you know, those are, um. Hearings. And petitioners come back every single time, I mean, that because once in over thirty days, I mean, that has pretty much passed, for example, or the ten days, not, that would be fine here. Uh. Can they appeal on a different basis? I mean, it's just, uh, again, permit appeal, they come back on something that they didn't like.
You know, um. I'm not sure how frequently one can appeal a permit. I can look into that, um, but I would say that if. If the Health and Safety Code gives them a right to continue appealing, um, that's not something that we could address in our, our rules. Um, but I could just take a look and see what, how frequently you're allowed to appeal, um, if it's a matter of a rehearing, the board always has the discretion to. Um, not. Offer a rehearing.
Yeah.
But definitely happy to provide some clarity on that.
I think, I mean, for looking into that, I mean, Emily, that's a very good point. I remember also there was an additional one, um. Uh, it was just something different, I mean, and that's when we actually said, you know, it has nothing to do with permit appeal, you know, they actually, they found something else. Yeah. No, thank you so very much, good point. Any other comments from the members of the board? You have no comments, I mean, the APCB?
No comments.
Thank you. I mean, the rule nineteen, I mean, that deals with amendments. Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from APCB?
Yeah.
Thank you. Rule twenty, you know, this is a response. Any comments from the members of the board? You have no comments, uh, comments from APCB? I'm playing. No comments.
No.
Thank you so very much. Rule twenty-one, submitted materials. Material, rather. Any comments from the members of the board?
This looks good.
Wait. Karen, it is, I'd say, I believe, um, board was considering examples of good cause for accepting late submitted material.
This is still kind of, um, a rough, this is kind of a rough draft here, because we've run. For purposes, at the end of the first paragraph of rule twenty-one, says for purposes of this rule twenty-one, and here's another this. Um, I guess we're using this when we're within the same law, anyway, for purposes of this rule twenty-one, it's been a material, good caution, but not even needed to insert examples. I mean.
And for that worth, I don't think it's required, uh, but that was a, a preference of the board, so if the board decides they don't want to include them, that's fine, we can just say for good cause. So at the board's discretion.
I re, and I remember being on the side of the argument of not including examples, just because good cause is. In the idea that that should be enough, um, and there's, there is too large of a legal, um. Term or context to. To delineate by examples, but did anyone think of examples that they would like to include?
No, I mean, I was also, I mean, not to have examples on this one, and particularly when there's only one board member hearing emergency variances. I mean, it's still in a discretionary to that individual, how he or she, I mean, finds good cause.
No, no, this isn't emergency.
No, 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 I mean, but submitted materials, I mean, because emergency variance, they're also, I mean, submit materials.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, this, because this rule is seven days prior, so emergency variance is just that same day, right?
Usually, well, yeah, two days prior, yeah.
Yeah, two days prior, so. Um. You guys know, do, do you guys understand where we, where we are at on this one? Remember this discussion?
Yeah. The more I think about it, the more I, the, the, being more you are, the, even at good cause, I'm trying to find anything, because then. Somebody, somebody else is trying to appeal, and you, you argue things as a way to focus on the example.
Exactly.
Or rather than.
Yeah.
The actual good cause.
And, and that's, that's the point, I mean, somebody can definitely come back and say, okay, if you do this not for the regulars interns and everything else, why, you know, not having emergencies and go back and forth like that? Just leave it at cost.
Um, so then, I, I would suggest, um, this helps that we just remove the last sentence of the second paragraph.
No problem.
Thank you.
And just a question, I mean, we routinely, um. You know, at times the district, I'm going to say, we get the PowerPoint, and we'd like to show it, and we always can't hear or show it, and so it becomes part of the record that we always get. So with this, uh, except for good cause. I, I don't know if we ever denied. The, the APCB, the ability to do a PowerPoint, and so. Um. It, it becomes a defective part of the written record, it seems a little swirly, I mean, how, how it works, I, I want to hear your PowerPoint, good. But the way it sounds, it's almost like if you didn't get it done in seven days, and it's a big deal, and we go through it as well.
Yeah.
Well, I think we want to encourage people not to be dropping last-minute presentations, so by having it as a rule, because we're not exceptions to.
That's a good point.
I think.
I, I'd also like to say, so I know that our rule twenty-one, I mean, that I, particularly when PowerPoints aren't here, maybe there's a little flexibility. I still want to, to see, you know, both. Uh, positions, you know, that of the, uh, petitioner usually is outside, I mean, and APCB. And whichever order, seeing, you know, before, I mean, the, those seven, you know, uh. As part of the packet. So. It says, I mean, the, it's a written, uh, it says only what, unless otherwise specified in this rule, so any party or member of the public, you know, I mean, there's a party would actually be part of yours as well. A seven-day suspension to the hearing board, we need to submit, I mean, that a supplier of information to the board. I mean, that does the APCB see themselves as not being part of that party?
No, I, I think that this rule contains state of the city.
For instance. Just want to go back to.
Well, just a question for the APCB. If this were two days instead of seven days, would it mean that most of the time, the PowerPoints would be ready to go, so that you're not. It's not, it just doesn't become a routine thing, we're always granting. Good cause exceptions, because there is, there's too much of a cap between.
Yeah, I mean, two, two days would, we probably just submit it at, at that timeline, since it's, the meeting is so, you know.
But, but it needs to be noticed, I mean, that's, that's the issue with this as well, you know, the seven days is not worth the very last day.
Yeah, no, we're not suggesting to, to change it, because it's also better for the board to be able to review that information over the week. Deliver meaning notes more smoothly, so I think it would probably be our preference to try and do it at that time.
Okay. If I may clarify, any document that's submitted after the distribution of the agenda. Would. Need to be accepted by the board as an exhibit. So I think this may cover and may clarify. Like, a little bit of what the submitted materials would be, I mean, submitted after or within the seven days of the hearing. Would not necessarily be publicly available.
Mm-hmm.
Um. At the time, so the agenda packet would be publicly available, and any documents submitted. Prior to seven days would be available to the public and to, for, uh, hearing board review. And I, I seem to recall that when we allow PowerPoints that weren't submitted seven days prior. That they have to conform with substance to whatever was seven days prior, unless there was like a late. Response or something, and so. You know what I mean?
Material update.
Yeah, there's a material update, and those are some of the. Reasons why they're, we would find good cause to accept it, but.
Um, but we have thirty-one, is there a thirty-one that we can accept it on the day of, you know, so, or something like that, join the meeting? I would definitely, I mean, that prefer to, you know, do it beforehand, we're not saying anything, I would do it. Rather general.
You could also ask what the good cause is.
Of the.
Including of us.
Mm-hmm.
There we go.
Yeah, and we have had many meetings before, you know, where, uh, not recently, again, also different, you know, with COVID and stuff. I mean, that, there were, we actually have said, no, you know, your, you know, testimonies should be not sufficient for this, many, many a times.
Right.
You know, so.
Yeah, and we're always prepared to, to look at the same information verbally if the correct one isn't.
So maybe, you know, what we can actually do, I mean, outside, clerk of the board, I mean, we can definitely, you know, with the hearing board members and see if there is a need to revise the. The form or something like that. We'll have that back later on. Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, so there's, so just, just, um, following on.
Definitely.
So there's two different things, there's the, the written materials you submit to be noticed as part of the agenda packet. But rule twenty-five is about evidence, and we can accept exhibits. Exhibits is different from what's provided seven days ahead of time, so. So those are the two, that, those are, I. Um, number powers, I hope that kind of explains why sometimes. The, um, the slides are not necessarily exhibits. Um, but they're, you know, but sometimes they might, they might be exhibits, because they might include. Additional maps or data, things like that, so then it would be a matter of evidence under rule twenty-five. Um, but not necessarily, uh. Let's see, and it's, and, and so there's, so there's different timelines here, under rule twenty-five E. The parties are supposed to, you know, send each other. Their affidavits. If they're, um, if it's going to be later, um. It says. But that's different from the, the agenda packet.
Yeah. So we need to actually say that we need to submit materials, and then to be frank, including the agenda packet. And, um. Evidence, you know. Uh, good cause of twenty-five. Uh, thank you.
Maybe it would be good under paragraph two of rule twenty-one, where it says parties should be prepared for further evidence. Um, maybe see also rule twenty-five. Evidence. Just, just so, just so, you know.
Is there a difference between the two?
Yeah, and, and just, just so that if people read this rule, they'll realize this is not the only rule talking about. What's dependent to the clerk of the board. What do you think?
Emily's comments? Yeah, I think that's helpful, that, that they know exactly where to go and look for how to present evidence.
Yeah, I like that, thank you.
I think the way we handle these things actually works pretty well, and just, this. You know, here, the rule twenty-one, the way it's written up, it sounds much more formal. But, you know, we have a good system, I'm not sure it's necessarily completely reflected in. How the rule is written, but I'm fine with the way this system worked.
So, I mean, the. Would it be then to differentiate the evidence from the submitted materials to indicate, I mean, that these materials, I mean, to, um. I guess prepare the hearing board or the hearing, I mean, the. To understand, I mean, what is in front of us or something like that?
Well, actually, the way it's written is okay, I mean, it, it works, we just, it, it implies that. You don't get it in within seven days, then we're going to have a pretty strident process to get more information in, but we don't really do that.
Exactly.
Someone's got more. We want to hear it, and we allow it, and it works, so. I don't necessarily have any language change.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, APCB, any comments on rule twenty-one? You said twenty-one, yes.
No.
No. Rule twenty-two, notice of hearing. Any comments, I mean, the, um. On rule twenty-two?
Um, Karen Rodriguez, um, I believe the, we had discussed, um. Stating that the notice, the agenda would be placed, uh, outside the public meeting room, um. I, I got to thinking about that, and I thought that might be confusing for the members of the public, public to be constantly searching for whatever, wherever the agenda was posted. Um, so I think having one consistent location might be. Advisable, um, but that, that's the. Point I wanted to bring up.
And again, this, this goes back to what I remember counsel for the district, that during a prior meeting of the hearing board had mentioned. You know, there may or may not even be a bulletin board there anymore, so I thought we had said it was going to be. Here, is, so.
Yeah.
Um. So it, the agenda is going to be posted here at the APCB. Um, up in the Scripps Ranch office area, the, okay. Um, that, that address. Um, and. Uh, and at the website.
Yeah. I would definitely say that that shall be posted, I mean, the, I mean, the, and then locations would be. Um. Again, the sixteen hundred. Um. Or as, um, and the shared ones, I mean, we, uh, do we not actually, would be social point cover those requirements or no?
The SharePoint is not available to public.
The APCB. Excuse me, that is in the website, is that?
So they are, they are posted on the hearing board's website.
You know, so, I mean, if you use location of the website beforehand, I mean, that's so. That link is active, so maybe, maybe we should have it here as well.
If I understand, it would be. It would be. If I understand, it would be, it would be on the website and then at sixteen hundred Pacific Highway and also at the right location or?
No, I don't think it, I don't think it would be at the sixteen hundred Pacific Highway location, I think if there is no bulletin board there, um.
There is one in the back, you know, but I think that we should actually just, yeah, it's like, you know, I mean, sending people were geocaching on that one.
Yeah, I mean, well, and the thing is, most of the people interested in our hearing board meetings would be um petitioners or respondents, people that have business with the A P C D and are looking for a permit or a variance, and so they should, you know, have here is a reasonable location for that.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Any comments?
Um, yeah, I know, I know we have discussed this before and I'm not, I'm not sure about the bulletin board status over at the other building, but um would it be a um a useful, useful to consider that maybe we could suggest that every, um the agenda would be posted and we could say something like um at the publicly noticed meeting location to make it more flexible.
One or two, just I mean, we can carry that's the language or something like that.
Yeah, instead of saying of the specific address, just say at the publicly noticed meeting location. Um so you would say the agenda for each regular meeting shall be posted, and then I would maybe also consider getting rid of on the bulletin board, just again, more.
That, yeah, that that needs to go.
Just say outside of the publicly noticed meeting um location. But we need to send them to the.
A physical, yeah, we do need a physical location because if the publicly noticed meeting location is only going to be publicly noticed online. But we need, we need a physical place for someone that doesn't have internet access that, you know.
Hmm.
So I think, I think having this headquarter, you know, address, I think is good. Uh, you know.
Yeah, I agree, because you would have to know where the meeting is going to be in order to find, uh before, before it's noticed in order to find them.
Yeah, outside the A P C D, um but would, would this be the headquarter or or just office, office? Both needed at this. And then put in the address for this address here, yeah.
Yeah. Did you catch that? I mean, Emily?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. So, thank you. Okay. Sorry. Now, do we, do we need to add the public website noting that I do not like putting URLs?
You definitely need to mention on the hearing board's website.
Okay, yes, please, yeah, on the hearing board website. Instead of agents as public know website. Okay. Because honestly, that's where it is. Good. Thank you so very much. Uh rule twenty three, procedures. Any comments from the members of the board? Excuse me. Uh comments not from A P C B? Definitely. Thank you. Rule twenty four, official notice.
What specifically does this rule cover? Official notice of course.
Oh, this is kind of more like judicial notice, um but since we're not judges and we're, you know, officers of the hearing board essentially, then taking official notice was the same as things. What what we're saying here is, is we would take judicial notice. If we were judged in a courtroom, you could take judicial notice of things like um like the sky is blue and the newspaper says X, you know, it has to be something that's caught like common knowledge or easily verifiable by very um you know, reputable sources. It's that kind of thing, like the almanac. You know, there was an earthquake on, let's just let's say, it would be things like that.
The only thing that I know, I mean, is that every single contract or agreement or anything like that always has that language. From the lawyers, so take it, so take it. Uh, any comments from A P C B? No, fine, okay, perfect. Rule twenty five, evidence.
Oh, and I just wanted to add that um we added some language to reflect the administrative procedures act, um procedure for um taking or accepting affidavit that's noticed, so that just reflects. That reflects.
Great, good. That, that's in, um it's on.
Rule section.
I think it's D and E of twenty five or, yeah, E, this part about.
Yes, affidavits, yes. Hmm. Yeah. I think that this was needed. Thank you so very much. Any comments from the members of the board? Comments from A P C B?
No.
Thank you. Uh let's move to, you know, rule, rule twenty six, request for discovery, statements and. Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from A P C B on rule twenty six?
No.
Thank you. Rule twenty seven, opinions. Any comment on rule twenty seven from the members of the board? Any comments from A P C B on rule twenty seven?
No.
Well, thank you. Rule twenty eight, continuances. Any comments from the members of the board?
Are we moving too fast, Mr. Powers?
No.
Okay.
I'm looking at the.
Yeah.
We've gone through this enough over the last eighteen months.
All right. Does that, you know? You know, when I should put some.
Okay, I think I'm done with rule twenty eight, continuances.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, A P C B, whether any comments from A P C B on rule twenty eight? Well done. Thank you. Rule twenty nine, withdrawal of petition or appeal.
No comment.
Any comments from the members of the board? No, A P C B, comments on rule twenty nine?
No.
Thank you. Oh my gosh. Rule thirty, failure to appear for hearing.
No comment.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that looks fine. Um, I'm noticing, are you guys noticing for rule thirty when we just need to put it to the next line, yeah? Just a formatting issue for rule thirty one.
The, the black copy, you know, that you know, provided on its part, so you know, it does that, we have. You have it here on the, yeah, red line, correct?
Yes.
That's the correct, yeah, just, just that one. Okay. Thank you. I mean, uh, did I actually ask, I mean, A P C B on rule thirty? No comments? Rule thirty one, findings. Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from A P C B on rule thirty one?
No.
Well, thank you. Rule thirty two, compliance schedules. Any comments from the members of the board?
This is our, this is our meat and potatoes of what we deal with.
That's my favorite section.
And hearing, you know, changes and reasons why, you know, they come back. Okay, anyway, yeah, no comments.
Okay. Comments from A P C B on rule thirty two?
No.
No comments. Thank you so very much. Rule thirty three, decision. Any comments from the members of the board?
No.
No. Any comments from A P C B?
I don't have.
Thank you. Rule thirty four, effective date of decision. And thank you so very much. Now, this is one of the ones, now that is very important. Particularly historically, because I haven't been getting anything, so I don't have to comply. Hmm, comments, yeah, comments from the members of the board?
Yeah, so it said, so, so, so this one means, um it's affected the date of the, that we decided and not when they get it in the mail pursuant to the previous rule.
Correct. Correct. Any comments not from A P C B on rule thirty four? Well, thirty five, rehearing.
This one reminds me of the maybe issue we were bringing down. Rehearing, is there a, a part in this section that how um how many times they can request re-hearing?
Hmm.
It seems like once.
It's it's once in a bit, three days, and then after that, it has, you know, clock starts within your.
Okay.
Schedule. And any comments from the members of the board or over in my re-hearing?
So for re-hearing, that first line says, once the thirty days after the initial hearing is done, and we, we heard the request for re-hearing and said, no. They don't, they don't get another thirty days to come back and have to get anything, and I think that's the reason.
And we don't have to re-hear it, so it's up to our discretion, so that's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. Comments on thirty five?
Slight nuances, that there's different um requirements for when a member of the public decides to re-hear or just the hearing board decides of its own volition to re-hear. Um so that's why there's slightly different requirements.
No, thank you so very much. I mean, that's a very reminder. Rule thirty five, A P C B, any comments on rule thirty five? No comment.
Oh my gosh, I cannot believe it.
Well, no, you know, we actually, now, I mean, that we definitely have a member of the public, actually, there's a member, I mean, not a member out of the hearing board. And today, uh definitely he's going to be uh representing himself and as part of the public uh and wants to uh include, I mean, some comments, I mean, to be uh rules of proceedings here. I mean, that's, so Mr. Engelmann, you know, we actually have a request to speak uh uh for in favor. And uh, and if you can definitely go back one by one and let us know your comments, we'll appreciate that. So go ahead, Steve.
Great, thank you. Uh actually, the board did a great job of uh hitting a lot of the issues that I had. Got four out of six or four out of five, and then I ended up adding one as a result of the discussion. So we'll, we'll start, we'll start with thirteen A.
Okay.
Um, there's a really long sentence in here and I read it a bunch of times and each time I was still couldn't quite get what it was trying to say. If a petition is not submitted electronically on the hearing board website, petition together with any accompanying documents, contains a total of ten pages or less, the clerk of the hearing board shall not later than the day the petition is filed, transmitted, you know, I, I can keep going. I think that the issue that I kept coming at was, is it supposed to be containing a total of ten pages or less? I, I couldn't really, like, there were so many things packed into this sentence. It almost feels like it needs to be broken up a little bit or something, right? So that's my first comment. Second comment, rule thirteen C refers to subdivision C, which seems to be a circular reference. I think there probably was an edit where C needs to be changed to something else.
Hmm, hmm, you got catch on that one.
And then the last item is a comment on discussion around rule fourteen and whether the hearing board can accept submissions that are not double spaced with four inches on the top and one inch on the left. I was going to suggest that um instead of like leaving it wide open or something like that, you could, you could leave that that language in there and then add a language that says the hearing board may accept submissions that are readable and legible that do not comply with these specifications. And that leaves flexibility for, like you were saying, if somebody provides something else.
Because I mean, I definitely wanted to leave it there, but as an example, not as a requirement.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I mean, so I think that.
So that way, if you accept, if the hearing board accepts some other submission, nobody can object and say, you didn't follow your.
And that is the purpose of my, of my comment, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, so those are, those are my comments.
That's what we've done well, I mean, so let's go, let's go back to thirteen. I mean, if you uh essentially go, take a look at that uh that very long sentence. It could have been longer if it wasn't Spanish, you know. Okay, so let's actually take a look at that, I mean, with Emily, I mean, the uh, Emily, I mean, that so, uh, are you with us? And it's highlighted, it's on the Mia is showing it.
Yeah, yes, I do that. I, I agree, it's quite long.
So is there?
I'd be happy to rework it, and if the board doesn't have a particular vision in mind, I can just take a look at it and see if I can get it, you know, break it down and make it more clear.
Okay, no, I think that that will be really very good because it's true. I mean, you cannot, you know, go back to two fragments before to actually catch up, you know, what you're actually talking about. That's true. But then again, I mean, I read it in Spanish, I mean, it makes all sense. Yeah, thank, thank you so very much, you know, I mean, that so. Uh is there any language, however, you know, I mean, that anybody here, I mean, would like to propose right now, or would we allow, you know, I mean, that council to take it from here?
Oh, just one suggestion, after hearing board website, instead of column, you could just put a colon and then defines this is only relevant, you know, submitted electronically.
Yeah.
We work the same.
But that's, that's a suggestion, I mean, that helps. I mean, that's, so we will definitely allow you to uh address now this, uh this comment here.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you so very much. Steve, you know, the second one was um on thirteen. Could you please remind me of the?
Thirteen C refers to subdivision C, which appears to be a circular reference. I think there's some, it's probably D or E, but I don't, I don't really know.
That is true. I think, you know, that we sound something take track of this as well, but good, good eagle eyes on that.
I, I, I agree. Thank you for pointing that out. I think it's probably uh subsection A that it's supposed to reference, but I'd like to take a look at it. So I'll double check that.
And if we look at the, um, if we look at this version that Mia has, the director version, notice it used to be B.
Hmm.
B, except it's provided in subset subdivision C, so now that it's C, it's yeah, maybe it should be.
Yeah, will allow you to, you know, definitely go for, for that one, so thank you. And your last comment, I mean, that's the.
That was just on rule fourteen and and for broadening or giving the, in the rules codifying at the hearing board as the discretion to accept submissions that are readable and legible and don't comply with the specifications that are applying in rule fourteen.
Yep.
Oh, it's been really great.
Yes, excellent.
But, because we missed those.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you so very much, you know, I mean, that excellent, so. Okay, I mean, I think, you know, that we actually have action, I mean, the uh for Ms. Holmes uh to, you know, some, hopefully, you know, I mean, the final draft and reword, I mean, on, on this uh the rules, I mean, for the hearing boards. And then, I mean, that, uh, because when do you think, you know, that uh you're going to be able to address now these provisions and then where, when can we notice this? That's ultimately, that's about it.
You know, i- if it's acceptable to the board, maybe not um at this upcoming meeting, but maybe the following meeting, would that work for your timeline?
To August. I would say, yes, absolutely, half of the month, I mean, that, yeah, that'll be good, August tenth. Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you.
And to, and to notice it, to review and potentially adopt.
And then adopt, exactly, yeah, we want to review and adopt. I mean, to do the notice, okay, so, sorry. Perfect. I'm sorry, you know, I mean, the, do we actually get a motion? I mean, the, do, uh, I guess, I mean, the uh instruct, no, I mean, the council, not for the hearing board, I mean, to make the revisions and then to notice, I mean, the, for the next meeting, I mean, the, to do a final review and a potential adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I mean, the, I'll second, just to get one. I mean, the, I mean, if, you know, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Powers?
Aye.
Member Spencer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schley?
I.
Chair Rodriguez?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that motion passes, uh directing council to. Madam Chair, that motion passes, uh, directing council to, uh, revise and bring the. Uh, revised hearing board rules of procedure back to the hearing board on August tenth for revision and, um. And possible adoption. Um, with all members present voting aye, with the exception of my response, Alice, who's not, uh, present for Tuesday's hearing.
Perfect, no, I mean, that's, so, thank you, thank you so very much, I mean, everybody, I mean, anything else that we need to discuss? Okay, if that is the case, I mean, I thank you, everybody, I mean, that for your participation, uh, and as a reminder, we're gonna be, uh. Hopefully acting, I mean, on these, uh, rules of procedures, uh, for the hearing board, I mean, on August tenth. Uh, this is gonna be our next meeting, so thank, no, that's not true, our next meeting is gonna be on the twenty seventh of July. I mean, that's, so I will see you then, thank you, everybody, have a great day. Powers, where, you know, the. Now, request, those members here. The tenth.